Yeah. The City of Rose Point Park Planning Commission Meeting. I will start off by calling the roll. So if you are present, please indicate so. We'll start with Vice Chair Chesterton.
Present.
Commissioner Coletta.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Sam Pear is absent this evening. Commissioner Vitacchi.
Present.
Mayor Hedges.
Present.
City Manager Seisland.
Here.
And joining us, City Attorney Shell.
Present.
All right, we are all present and accounted for. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the February 10th meeting minutes. So if all of the members of the commission could take a look, make sure you received those minutes. If you have any questions or any corrections that you need to make, please let us know. If there are none, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes.
Subtle.
Motion by Commissioner Coletta in a second. Second by Mayor Hedges. We will have a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The ayes have it and the meeting minutes are approved. All right. Moving right along. Public comment on agenda items. So I need to ask a point of clarification since the public comment period on the master plan is closed. Is that excluded from public comments?
Yeah, so that is closed. I would say separately from any general comments about the process moving along. So substantive comments about the master plan that public comment period is closed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So is there any comments from the public this evening? That's okay. You're welcome, sir. Please state your name and your city of residence.
My name is El Mazer. I live at Thirty Point Park Place and the condos across the street. And what I came here about is the fact, you know, about this building, the parking lot. Green space by the library. And a couple of points. Number one, it's totally against what the Jefferson Avenue renewal policy that started under Palmer Heenan in the eighties. That includes actually City Hall stiffing itself up, the beautiful park across the street. Our condo building, which I understand, I know the council was elated when that was built, you know, wonderful landscaping over there. And that condo produces well over $300,000 a year in property tax, where there was zero, absolutely zero. And I, my feeling, the units that face that parking lot, you know, why should they have to look at that? All ten windows, that's from every room in the house, master bedroom, the living room, the dining room, the office, and the other bedroom. And the number of those people work from home, San Antonio people's home, people of all ages with some with young kids who actually play there in that parking lot, or currently in the green space. I, my idea is we should replicate what's there, with having the greenery, City Hall by the library, leave the green space for the kids to play. They deserve it. So the thing is, we found this commission was the one that first designated that to be parking lot a number of years ago. And we found out a number of spots based on the seating in the theater, but not for the entertainment. Nowhere have I found that. I understand that originally it was 160 spots were available, 127 were there, 160 were needed, but nothing about the formula, you know, for the entertainment. I still feel they offered an alternative by using Merit Academy. We have more than 40 parking spots, which is what the city manager indicated he needed. He also said he was working on hopefully finding more parking spots elsewhere, but no one seems to be able to tell me if that was even investigated. It's all owned by the Archdiocese. St. Ambrose administers it. It uses L.A. parking. And the thing, the one thing I understood was they don't, part of the parking lot would be so people wouldn't park in the street. Yet if the, if you're coming late, then the St. Ambrose lot is full, where are you going to park? Drive over there and walk back, it'd be late, or are you going to park, are you going to park on the street? I would walk because I live so close. But that's, that's like unanswered questions, but I just wanted to point, you know, represent our point of view. If any, if you know somebody that lives there, especially faces late point, call them up, go see what it looks like from their place. A lot of them work from home, especially the ones, there's five people that work from home or use it as an office. And there's no reason why they would have to like, well, she put shades down on her windows, not be able to open their windows in the summertime when cars start up and headlights come into place. It's, it's not a good idea. I, I offered alternatives and I wish somebody could tell me whether they've been explored. It's, you know, I spent some years on the beautification commission and Palmer Heenan, the last, and you know, when he, he would ask me, what do I do about this? I gave him an alternative. And he liked, well, he asked, it was a friend of mine to name the algorithm after him. He said, what do I do about George Helm? I said, put, make George Helm Boulevard underneath Jefferson Avenue. Over the next year, it was Jerome K. Appiah's algorithm, and George didn't want that. It's the George Helm Boulevard. So that was my alternative for this, is Merit Academy parking. Somebody should investigate that in the Canadian's of L.A. Is my suggestion. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for coming in, sharing your comments and your ideas. And I would recommend to City Manager Seisland that maybe there could be representatives from the Park Place, from the minions, at the next DVA meeting. Because I believe that project has moved on to the DVA, but we'll make sure that your comments and your voices are heard.
And I appreciate that. I have met with Mr. Mazer and did tell him that, you know, certainly they'll be included in the process.
Thank you. If there's anyone else tonight that has public comment? We are going to move on to new business, which is commission comments. At our last meeting, commissioners paired up into subcommittees and we took a bit of a deeper dive into the master plan and looked specifically at the action items that are part of the master plan. City administration and our planning consultant MKSK requested that we refine those comments a bit, edit them down. And just get some kind of sharper clarity with them. So we've done that. And if there are commissioners, what I'd like to do is kind of go through and see if there are commissioners that want to ask any further questions about their subcommittee assignments and point if there are any other points of clarification that are needed. So I'm actually going to start with myself and Commissioner Evans. I do not need any further clarifications, but Commissioner Evans, were there any points that we went over that you wanted to highlight or discuss?
I'm good with this list, but one that did question, and I know we discussed it, was the high priority on replacing the Patterson Park Place. And just getting budgetary restrictions and some other priorities, I would look at dropping that.
Put that dip back down to medium? Sure, I'm, I'm good with that. If any of the other commissioners have a question on that point. Kind of taking into consideration what, what the Parks and Rec budget is, we can certainly bump that, bump that down until the funds are allocated. That's fine with me. Anything else that you think we need to further clarify on that? We're pretty good on that. Commissioner Sam Pear is absent this evening, but Commissioner Coletta, if there were any other points that you wanted to highlight in your comments?
Thank you. I, I think I speak for both of us when, when I say that we're satisfied with comments that we proposed last time, how we shuffled some of the priorities and addressed some of the concerns for our comments.
Was there anyone who had questions or comments for Commissioner Coletta? They took a look at complete streets. Okay, I'm going to move on to commissioners Vitacchi and Chesterton. I know the two of you had the deepest dive, taking a look at zoning and a lot of those related issues. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Chesterton, because we had some comments from Commissioner Vitacchi, so I'm going to start with Commissioner Chesterton. If there are any points that you wanted to take a look at to clarify and then come back to Commissioner Vitacchi, because I think we still have a little bit of the conversation to get some of those, those points coming down.
Thank you. No, I don't necessarily have anything new. I think I, I think I still read it off where we did last, but there's a lot of open-ended questions, but it's not necessarily unedited at this point. Identify some questions. I think probably the two that are the most open-ended is the recommendation to ensure that there are commercial development standards in place, not just residential development standards. Such as like the gentleman in the audience mentioned that there would be pedestrian-oriented development standards along Jefferson, among others. Similar to what's happening with Jefferson East with the traditional lane street overlay. That's a big open-ended. I could see a way, that's a big open-ended recommendation. I could see a point where it's simply added as a to-do list in terms of the implementation matrix. And the other item that we've talked about is the notion of the retail restaurant mix in the downtowns. A lot of communities that have a, have an overture on ensuring that their downtowns don't get beyond 60% retail to restaurant mix to ensure that we don't become an entertainment district or other, you know, the sort of customary tail over Loyola, et cetera. And that it provides a perfect balance from a parking standpoint, retail comes in by day, it can flip, a restaurant comes in by night. So those are the two sort of big open-ended that we didn't have the opportunity, we haven't really had the vehicle to have open conversations that have always been like this. So those are the two big open-ended, and I think that the other, the other comments are sort of in the same spreadsheet. And Commissioner Vitacchi, of course, did an excellent job at thoroughly updating this and following the rules. And I think, I would definitely defer to him based on some, some points of clarification on priority and implementation.
Thank you. Um, I'll start, I guess, with the clarification. So I see there's two sets of comments printed out. So the one that's wordier is, when I sent the file, I guess, it's my fault because I didn't make it clear. I had sent a previous comment in that file. So there, there is a printout that has the February 10th comments.
And that's a whole commission members, yeah.
Right, yeah. And those are from Commissioner Chesterton and myself. We don't need a best rehash of those because we already covered them. The, so one pager are the sort of revised comments where kind of took the direction to distill things down and kind of identify. Sharp in the pencil a little bit. And so what I sent were kind of like my comments, taking the February 10th comments and editing them down. So there's nothing really new here. There's some things out. But basically what we have is, I don't need to go through everyone, but the basic guidelines were, I wanted the high priority items to be reflective of the surveys that MKSK had done to the community, which there were a couple. And I also wanted the high priority items to be only the high priority items that came from the community. I think at February 10th, we talked about that, we're quite few high priority items. So just to sort of give a flavor of the newer spreadsheet that I sent. So, you know, the first one listed under neighborhoods is integrating residential building design guidelines as standards in the zoning coordinates. So the way I interpret that wording was that the direction was to be actually able to take the residential standards, which are listed in the draft, and replace our current zoning with that. You know, I had questions because when I read those, those standards, there were some areas that were more specific than what we have in our current zoning and other areas where our current zoning is more specific than what they had in the draft. So there were questions, and Commissioner Chesterton alluded to them already. How are we going to meet these together? Who's going to make the decision? You know, one example is ice block windows. Like, the, the new draft is very specific about ice block windows and other discouraged. I don't think they say anything about that in our current plan. So are the, are the items in the draft, are they going to supersede what we have? I mean, what's sort of the rule as to how we're going to weave these things together? That's not clear to me in the draft right now. So I propose sort of softer wording on it, just basically identify which parts we're going to bring in to the zoning and identify which parts we're going to keep from existing zoning. So that's sort of the, the gist of that wording that I proposed there.
And I'll interject at that point, just to give, I think, a point of further clarification, and City Manager can, can jump in. After the master plan is adopted, the next phase of what the city administration and city council will hopefully be looking at is revision of our zone, our zoning guidelines in our city code. So they would be the ones to determine how those design guidelines are implemented in the code. So I think what you and Commissioner Chesterton both touched upon is, there are some things in the plan that are very specific, there's some that are very vague, and we probably don't want to have, like you said, incredibly specific guidelines in that master plan, because that needs to move forward to city council when they take a look at, you know, kind of creating those building standards and guidelines. So I don't, I, I agree with you that I don't think we need to be so specific, but can those examples be left in the master plan so that city council has the opportunity to review those as examples and not hard and fast, you know, pieces that they need to adopt? Okay, so this is Commissioner Chesterton, yes, may I?
So I just, and again, I understand since we haven't been through this in a very long time, there's obviously a lot of, just to give some clarity around the purpose of the master plan is intended to be the book field, the spirit of what we want. It is intended to be high-level aspirational guidelines, and, and, you know, and ask for Commissioner Vitacchi, and then intended to be very community-forward. The zoning, the, the, the guidelines stated in the master plan are intended to be aspirational. The zoning is the instrument. It's the law that gets us there. So there'll be a, a, a much further filter, which is why things such as materiality, et cetera, are probably not likely appropriate in the master plan. Council won't be writing the zoning ordinance, neither will council be writing the ordinance. So it's make sure that once it's distilled into law, into zoning ordinance, we've prepared, through the community, we've prepared a set of vision of what we want to be, which is why I believe that the, the commercial design guidelines also need to be there as well. Very simple zoning goes from there. If we, if we choose and we have to crawl before we walk, we could go a step further and create a series of true design guidelines to get into materiality, some nods to historic, et cetera, but that would then come even after a zoning ordinance. And so just to make everyone, so we have master plans, the spirit, zoning would be the vehicles, we're building safety, engineering, et cetera, and then an additional layer of design guidelines would be created thereafter. None of that will be created by anyone but us. We've done the master plan, the zoning and the guidelines. We could also, that's something that the community would like to look at, it would likely be formed by an additional commission, hopefully one, you know, hopefully organized by experts and historians, et cetera. But I think we're, I'd love to see it, but I think we're.
And something to, to that effect, you know, we do have our building official that obviously adheres to our zoning code, goes to the Michigan Building Code. So if there is specific questions, like, you know, let's talk about the block windows and such, you know, they, if it's not specifically set within our zoning, they will go to the Michigan Building Code to see if that's something that's permitted within the new design requirements.
And it is. Also, I mean, oh, Phil, who cares about, it's like safety over there.
So, yeah, I, I guess I hear what you're saying. If, if the intent is that we will have control over our zoning ordinance, you know, that's, that's fine. The way that that particular action item is written, someone could interpret that, I suppose someone could interpret that, to say, we will take the residential building design guidelines as written in the draft by then past day. And whenever we as a commissioner, whoever sets the zoning ordinance, decides that it's going to be different from that, then there may be problems. Someone could reasonably say, well, you adopted a master plan that said these should be your residential building design guidelines. Why are they not? And then we'll have to get a lot of explanation. If, if it's understood by everybody that we're not going to be lifting, cutting and tasting, and so there's going to be some flexibility on part of, you know, our local officials or this commission, and that we can make changes, I guess I'm fine with that. I was just concerned that that's not how I read the actual version of that actually.
Yeah, sure. That's a fair question.
So before I move on from that, I will just note that that particular action item, the wording kind of shows up in different areas too. So we have to like flow through the rest of the document. I think it's the third one under neighborhoods, for neighborhood, the Rose Point Fuller School system on features, Trolley Elementary School, they had that as a mid-range, tiny, medium draft priority. I, I would encourage it to go to higher priority in short term, because I'm, I'm not sure what their schedule is. I'm, I'm not sure the school system, if that's a midterm, tiny, or medium priority for that, higher in like in short term. And I want us to be involved with that and not get caught on prayers. That's, that's just my thought on that.
Agreed, a hundred percent.
And I can.
And you should spell Trolley correctly.
Yes, yeah, no, that's the other thing, yeah, we, and I could speak a little bit to that too. So I do know that obviously the school district, you know, one of the other schools was Pupar that was closed over in Harper Woods. They will be going through in RFP process, and they worked with the city of Harper Woods, and there's some tax credits incentives over there. I don't believe that RFP has been issued at this time right now for Pupar. I am having conversations currently with the school district, you know, looking at opportunities for Trolley Elementary School. Something just to keep in the conversation, working with the district of all the opportunity that is still there. So those conversations are ongoing right at this time, and I do imagine at some point this commission will further discuss these.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So I saw that similar commentary about the residential building design guidelines. I would apply to the commercial building design guidelines in terms of maintaining flexibility compared to adjusting those items. And this, this is in the zoning piece now. Increase the distance for off-street parking to provide flexibility for businesses. I, I guess I don't have a problem with this one other time. I guess I'd like the task written in such ways to provide more definition, like weight, like what's the minimum distance, which businesses would this apply to? Similar to the next one, this revised the minimum parking requirements, follow for best practices. I don't know what those best practices are. I don't.
And that's what we had discussed before, and I mentioned again to the city manager that we do have the parking study that MKSK is now completed, so that should be added to the master plan as an appendix, and those are, you know, for further details.
Okay.
But thank you. That is a good, a very good point, because it doesn't clarify that, and parking has been something that we've been talking about.
Yeah, and Commissioner Vitacchi, excuse me, per your point as well for the off-street parking for flexibility in the businesses. This is something that, you know, as we're getting more businesses coming into the Churchill and Charlotte Boy area, obviously, you know, our current zoning is quite a challenge in regards to parking, and so there is that need for the, of flexibility, that this is something we'll certainly probably bring it up at the ordinance review committee. Obviously, we're going to be looking into this master plan too for how we set those guidelines, but it's something that certainly, and it's been, the business associations really, you know, had that concern come up to us, so. Kind of something we're definitely looking into.
Our parking standards are from the Palatine. I mean, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about that in relation to the arc center, I remember, because we were talking about the number of parking spaces needed, and it was, it's excessive. But that was because we were looking at, you know, parking ordinances that were, you know, one person in a car driving versus people carpooling or ride sharing.
Right.
So I think as we, you know, update that, you know, that, that, that eases that burden for the business districts in, in particular.
And, and, and to go off the business district too, as an example of the challenges of the current parking requirements. We're, the city's currently working with St. Clair Montefalco over on Mac Avenue, that they're actually going to work on replacing their driveway, also separating their sanitary system from the store, so that's about .6 acres coming off of the city system, which is fantastic. We're going to be looking to do a water main project. Where this all lays into is that, per the zoning ordinance right now, it requires X amount of parking spaces per parishioners. This is something that we looked into, working with our planning consultant, John Jackson McKenna, that we needed to allow some flexibility for the St. Clair Montefalco, because they actually wanted to reduce the amount of their parking spaces in, in purvey surface over at St. Clair. So we actually had to go back into, and we found there's some language in the Michigan Building Code that allows us to use interpretation. And that's something too with the, in these discussions of parking, not only in the businesses, but also the churches, and that, that we have to revise for, you know, the decrease that we're seeing at the church levels.
Okay.
First, just for a point order, are we in a discussion right now? I don't have to say three chair or.
Yes, you can. I mean, especially this, this is part of your section too.
Commissioner Vitacchi's question about there being not a lot of language in the master plan about the change to parking, uh, change to parking requirements. And we will get there when we get to ordinance, but I'm wondering if through McKenna, if there has been any discussion about parking minimums? Or are we only talking about minimums?
Uh, right now, it's kind of a broad perspective of, you know, really what we're discussing with McKenna is that, you know, once this master plan is adopted, you know, we're going to look at those standards of what we're looking for, obviously with the parking study as well. Something that, you know, we'll be looking at those minimum maximums, even the discussion that you said to the point of, let's say, you know, it's the Grubhub, you know, coming, and you just need 10-minute parking, you know, not as many spaces, you know, for that. So to your point, long and short. We're having broad discussions right now, but we're nothing at a point of setting them at this point. This is something we've identified as part of the zoning that we really have to update.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And so McKenna is doing the parking study?
No, that was, MKSK completed a parking study. They did that for the TIPA, the DDA and portions of the city. That was already completed. And so we have both, the city has those right now at this point, and so I think.
It's either, it's on the city webpage, it might be under.
I'd be happy to send it to the commission, just to, so you guys can all take away those.
I'm sorry.
That was completed in the fall. I know Commissioner Sam Pear and I volunteered to count, count cars in, in spaces.
So Mike, what we're doing right now is, you know, we have our building official, you know, he's our chief building official. We also contract separately with McKenna for helping planning services, so if there's any cases for zoning interpretations, also, you know, where we have the waiver in development, we also have, if there's any variance requirements, and we're, you know, they're on staff to be able to pick their brain of what are, you know, you're seeing in the other Rose Points. The good thing with having McKenna on board is that they work closely with the various Rose Points, so they know certainly our challenges that we all have. And they work with the other communities and developers too, to see, you know, what, what is working over in Rose Point Farms, what's working in the city that maybe we can look at over in Rose Point Park. What choices are.
Okay. Just to move on to, so again, in the zoning area, there were a couple items pertaining to low impact development practices, another item for required camping, street trees, develop a suit tree, C G S list. These also show up in the sustainability section, and in those sections, they have a different priority listed. So I think we need to maintain the same priority, if I recall correctly, or medium, in the sustainability section. in the sustainability section. And on my mind, that's probably the right priority for them as opposed to the high listing. High priority listing is on the section, just going to my earlier point about, we don't want too many high priorities. Um, and swamp are our limited resources. That's about it in terms of my comments on the two sections that we were assigned. At the very bottom, I went ahead and based on the discussions we had at the February 10th meeting about the other sections. I do have one piece of commentary. Uh, with regard to on complete streets, uh, the white lane issue. So, uh, we talked about this a little bit on September 10th. To, uh, this, I don't think was listed as a high priority in regard to the survey data. So I, I would, and, and I think what we decided at the last meeting was if they have data to indicate that they have results like, based on, you know, they're like that, you know, I'm more than willing to change my mind, but I haven't seen any of that. So that's why I kind of persist in that commentary about the white lanes. So that's, that's about it.
One point I can add to that, actually, if the commission agrees, um, then I believe maybe one of the partners that we looked at in there is SEMCOG. Uh, they do have, uh, you know, data and maps that would be able to assist the city, uh, for that clerk, for that question to be able to see. So if you all agree, I'd be happy to put that in as part of the partners, um, under that section that the commission had taken discussing. Okay, I'm seeing head nods, so that's good, appreciate it.
We should be also at J E I.
I did have J E I in my notes and I will, you know, make sure those are incorporated too. I also had the Eastside Community Network, uh, the city TIPA, um, Wayne County, uh, Detroit.
Thanks, Commissioner Vitecki, appreciate it. Mayor Hodges, you were your own. You are among all of the committees, so I know you.
Thank you, Chair Lindsay. So just to reinforce a few, um, notes, I think, you know, clearly there's nothing more important in the next few years in infrastructure. So it really does need to be illuminated and punctuated as an important priority. And I think testimony to that was, um, provided yet again at a recent meeting that City Manager Seisler and I had with SEMCOG and the deputy director. And, um, in fact, she's even willing to take a look at our draft and circulated amongst her staff to ensure that the language there positions us well for a lot of the federal stimulus dollars that are coming down the pipe, which given, what's our timeline on our master plan by? I mean, we need to review five years. So in the next five years, clearly, you know, spending down those dollars is going to be a, a very important priority. We've got to make sure that our community is positioned well to accept those and to have a place to plug them and put them. So that language will be important and Ms. Gunter is willing to help us get there and will take that review. Uh, and, and infrastructure of course will be a very important place for those dollars could be spent. Mobility, um, as it relates to all forms of mobility. Uh, and I think any community that is relevant going forward is going to have to embrace all forms of mobility, including bike lanes. I think where the wisdom comes in however, is doing it properly and doing it in a very informed way, in a way that, um, really respects our resources too. So they can help us navigate those, those discussions with our community and help us figure out how to best effectuate that sort of infrastructure. So I, I'd really like to see that, uh, those items highlighted. And then to, as you both have already alluded to, we've had some fruitful meetings recently with, um, our partners, which would include Jefferson Eastlake and wanting to be able to really connect with our neighboring jurisdictions and understanding how to do that. We also have a rock star in our community, Janet Atarian, who is now with Smith Group, but, uh, was embedded in the city of Detroit. And its discussions regarding mobility and the likes, be able to leverage that. And then, as I said, the SEMCOG meeting that we just had, and it was very clear from her that there's tremendous opportunity out there. Especially for a community like ours that is willing to lead and really wants to push these initiatives forward. So highlighting that would be, um, very important. And as City Manager Seisler has pointed out, you know, infrastructure is covered in pages one eleven to one fifteen. Um, but we do need to bolster that to really reflect our current needs and to prepare us to receive those, uh, those resources. Um, let's see, what, oh, other areas to just, uh, you know, our collaboration, uh, uh, on our borders with our neighboring jurisdictions. SEMCOG can certainly help support those types of things too. So it should be spoken of in our master plan. And then one interesting sidebar that sort of came to me recently, uh, and in part because when we have unique, um, sources of funding that could then be leveraged as matches, um, it's important to, I think, recognize that. So one, and of course to Commissioner Chesterton's point of we don't want to get in those kinds of weeds in our master plan. But perhaps an overall general statement about the significance, uh, of the role that philanthropy has played in our community. And the indication that we're getting that that's only going to grow as we build that partnership and potentially in some very key areas. So it'd probably be worth noting that we do have those partners. And we do want to leverage those opportunities and the indications we're getting from both the Michigan Municipal League and SEMCOG is, that's unique. That makes our community unique. Um, so it should be pointed out and that's also a way to keep building that relationship by, um, by speaking of it and, and valuing and writing in our documents. Um, I'll highlight again the need to really look at the inventory of land. The city currently has ownership of both in the city as well as in neighboring jurisdictions and how we're going to utilize those assets. You've already mentioned Trombley, um, the borders are certainly key, our marinas might be a significant issue. And then really properly calling out two major assets, the SCOP Center and our DPW building as opportunities for, for growth. Uh, and, and certainly a need of, of looking at them through a planning, a planning lens. Um, other feedback I've seen is just, you, you know, the, the, the mapping and whether or not it's accurate. Within, I think there's some need for some tweaks, uh, relative to that in the document. Um, looking at more current census data, I think will ensure that we have a strong document too. And, um, so I'm looking through this mess of notes that I have here. Uh, but I think that covers the primary, um, the primary discussion points. I would want to make sure that we advance and highlight and punctuate in addition to what our colleagues have already said.
So much, does anyone have any questions for Mayor, Mayor Hodges on any of those points?
I, I can make a small comment. Okay, well, just to the infrastructure point, uh, something too that, uh, you know, I would be looking to, uh, you know, for this commission to consider is obviously if you look at the, recommendations right now, almost every item is high. Uh, certainly it's something we're looking into and, uh, currently ongoing is this process. Um, you know, something that, uh, you know, is really important and we've been doing this with this, uh, sewer cleaning. We're actually digitizing our sanitary system right now, um, you know, getting the data that's truly of knowing all forty-one miles of our sewer right now, where we're at and planning for the future of, you know, what are those next steps? Uh, we actually did have, um, you know, at one point, a grant from SEMCOG for, um, water, um, di- digitizing their curb stops and their hydrants in areas of, uh, water maintenance. And that's something too, as we're looking at not only on the sewer side, but also on the water infrastructure side of, you know, getting more of those dollars that are coming through. For example, at the state of Michigan right now, uh, there was about, uh, seven hundred million dollars in requests. And they expect probably close to a billion dollars in requests from communities that are looking at water infrastructure. The good news is that, uh, the federal government has been really focusing on infrastructure and that there's going to be some significant dollars coming from that service line replacement that has been discussed within the reports here. And so I'm going to still recommend keeping that there. Something that, uh, as well, we had our special Jefferson East Incorporated is, uh, the need for, uh, potentially leveraging, creating a watershed management. With, uh, the city of Detroit, the neighboring Gross Points, clear. Currently, we're part of the Clinton River Watershed Group. We're at the very bottom of that watershed and something that not only is, uh, you know, the state looking at and federal government is obviously, you know, we can look at Gross Point Park and see the infrastructure needs, but if we're able to tie it into the other communities too, those dollars are a lot easier and they can get really behind it. So something that I would, if the commissioner agrees, look to recommend, that the infrastructure is again, just using more of that collaboration. We have in there about collaborating on data, but more collaborating in efforts of these projects. And that's also, I'm going to even throw in there, um, if anyone disagrees, but Great Lakes Water Authority. This is something that we're working with them right now on a regional basis. Uh, we're look, they're looking at our assets we have here, they're looking at City of Gross Point, City of Detroit. And that partnering with the GLWA is going to be humongous for Gross Point Park. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those for everybody and that I'd be happy to hear any other comments, uh, infrastructure if anyone disagrees, but.
Well, no, I think City Manager Seisler as well, the other thing we learned from SEMCOG is they can help us make those things happen, like a watershed. And it'd be a convenor for those discussions. And that would be viewed very favorably by them as well. And the other important thing that we learned from them is this massive amount of money really can't be managed by the state of Michigan alone. They need partners at the local level to help fulfill, to, to one make decisions on where those dollars should go. And then fulfill the grant requirement. So SEMCOG will be a hugely important partner that we need to be in an alliance with and we can be in constant dialogue with. Cause they'll be making those crucial decisions on our behalf. Um, and, and, and we were told very directly, water infrastructure is one of their top priorities, um, in addition to mobility. Those are probably the two top, which are two of our top priorities. So as well as the borders and the gateways and those sorts of planning, uh, efforts that are already underway in some way, um, that we can continue to build off of. And, um, and, and be part of that momentum.
That all sounds fantastic. I mean, hopefully that the, the master plan becomes, uh, be able to help with leveraging in those federal dollars, dollars at the state level as well, so.
That was made very clear. That, so that's why I think it'd be wonderful to have SEMCOG take a look at this document now. While we're still in a position to really mold and form it in a way that makes it easy for them to help us boil down.
Idea, now can we, in terms of the Planning Enabling Act, are we still in that period when we can send it to our partners? Do we know that?
I don't, uh, when you say partners, you need to.
We're sending it to SEMCOG. We would send it to our, those agencies in our neighboring communities after council, after council. Just to make sure I understand where we're shooting at the process of that. Okay, are there any other commission comments?
Um, I think we're going to hear other comments, but right in terms of the agenda. So I think that I want to just make sure that we don't end this meeting without, I, I, I think we added some new, which is good. I don't think that we necessarily have a vehicle yet to get this all into one concise document. So I think that's definitely, I want to make sure that we.
So all of our comments and edits today, City Manager Seisler and City Administration will take that. supervise them, edit them, put them into, you know, one concise piece. And then, you know, the commissioners will have the opportunity to look at that one more time before our next meeting. And we'll take a look at what that timeline will be.
Yeah, and also, you know, as part of that process, so I'll be meeting directly with MKSK with Brad Strater and Anne Marie Kirby. So, you know, we can go through the interpretation, uh, uh, from your commission comments. And, uh, a- a- after that point, that they will implement those comments. And then the next planning commission meeting will be the public hearing, as we advertise within fifteen days. And that at that point, you know, we'll be considering a potential approval for comments before it then goes to city council.
But the commissioners will see the draft after you and Brad and Anne Marie have.
I guess, my only concern with that right now, i- i- it's just concern and certainly I'd be happy to hear from the commission standpoint is really what MKSK was looking for is that this meeting tonight, uh, would allow for city administration with the planning commission comments to take everything here. Uh, certainly I'd be happy to provide it, but if we're looking to, if the commissioners were to add further comments, uh, or clarifications to those, um, I think that would present a challenge to MKSK and city administration, uh, at this point right now. And I think that's what we ran into before, which everybody had great comments. We had a lot of good feedback, what they're really looking for is, you know, just allowing administration and such after I've received all the comments and everything that we further revise. So unless anyone has, you know, further objections with that, that's my only fear at this point.
You're gonna, you're gonna take the, which sounds amazing, you're gonna do that, I mean, looking at getting this all distilled into one edit, one big edit copy edit.
Yes, that's what I'm.
Okay, okay, you've got the copy.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
Nice, true.
And, but, but are you saying that, I don't think that, I don't think that it's approvable. I think that we need to look at what the manifestation of that last copy edit is.
Okay.
Before we're comfortable, which is the same conversation we had back in February. We just, we have lots of good conversation, but we didn't look the dial and get something provable by this body. But would you, I think my fellow commissioners disagree. I can't, I, I, I can't take all of this and say, yes, I approve. Which so far, I want to make sure that.
I think that we are going to need to see the draft with the edits incorporated.
Okay. So, okay.
And again, speaking for myself, more than happy to do that through, um, through additional workshop work, through email, et cetera. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be a separate meeting.
Okay, yeah, my only point, just to make sure we're all on the same page here, is that I certainly, you know, my recommendation, we don't mind if we want to. I'll take these comments, put it into a draft, um, you know, document and then it sounds like what we're, we're looking towards that we have another meeting of the planning commission to consider all those comments again. And, uh, you know, then after that point, where then I'm putting this MKSK, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. This is.
Hey guys, we got this together, but no, I think we need a, we need a, we need an updated document to prove so it can send it to council.
So let me step back, so, uh, City Manager Seisler, what, what would you need from us to get it, that draft together for us to review before it's sent to MKSK? Like, is it? So like it, is the thing, is this file here that I sent a couple of days ago?
Right.
Is that what you need or do you need something different from that?
No, what you added, you know, what you had and everybody was perfect, um, you know, and then there was a couple of clarifying that'll be helpful in that when I'm providing those to MKSK and using the interpretations from this meeting tonight, uh, that I'll add to them. So my only concern, and again, it's just something to, you know, have a discussion about, is that the timeline we were looking at, but certainly happy to have, is that, um, you know, I would take these comments, work with MKSK and we'll, you know, have these all in one document. And what I was thinking was more so of at that point, it goes to MKSK. They would devise the draft master plan during the next meeting. What I'm hearing, just so I'm making sure, I think we're all on the same page, is that I'll do that, working with MKSK, have this all in one document. And at that point then, planning commission will review that final document. Before the public hearing of all those, of all those comments. At that point then, um, you know, I guess one thing I would think I have to consider is, you know, we would need to probably hold another planning commission meeting or are we looking at that, would this be a approved, you know, a consideration by the planning commission to send that document then to MKSK? And after at that point, they will implement that into the master plan.
So I'll, I'll, I'll give my opinion on that. So, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to make a process take longer than it needs to take. But we're still operating, um, off of the draft from October. So I don't want to get to a point where we're having a meeting where we got to approve something that we saw like three days before. Okay, so I would prefer that you send that document to them, they produce a draft, we vet it. So we can see like, did they make a change that's consistent with what we meant to make?
Right.
Then we have the public hearing, that's my opinion of that.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay, that's, that's, all right, that makes.
I would like to see what the draft that MKSK is able to produce before we have a public hearing.
Okay, all right, so then at that next meeting, uh, per working with MKSK, uh, we would then just be as a commission, uh, cause in the contract, we only have one more meeting left with MKSK, which will be at the public hearing, where they will present them the whole entire master plan. Okay, just want to make sure we're all on the same page. My thoughts here coming in some, that's, okay.
Commissioner Chesterton.
That's exactly, thanks.
It's good to have a body open to this.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Right, if there's no further comment or discussion, we would like to move, actually, we're in old business. So we've had our subcommittee review and discussion and we would like to go to city council, master plan and review and comment. We've invited city council members to attend tonight to see familiar faces here. Um, so what we would like to do, and again, we have, I, I do want to have city attorney itself just clarify. So everyone is kind of covered under OMA that we're making our comments this evening. So everyone is kind of covered under OMA that we're making your comments this evening. Um, we're not able to get into any substantive conversation because that would violate OMA. So that is for your protection, gentlemen.
Thanks for that clarification, Chair Lindsay. I just would like to know if, if there's any order we go in, uh, House of the Senator does have to leave, I believe. So if he could go first and we get this, we still have the table.
Absolutely.
You knew that.
I will call on prior neighbor number one. Since I have a few prior neighbors here.
Chair, I just wanted to give just a little ground rules. I think that we all understand, uh, that you guys are here just to give your comments. We welcome you. Uh, we reviewed the OMA and the Planning Enabling Act. And, uh, the council does have the right to provide comments on the draft to the commission for their consideration. Um, as Chair Lindsay said, there's not going to be any substantive dialogue about what they might think of your comments. Uh, if there's a clarifying question, you know, I don't understand what you, what you're trying to communicate, that's totally fine. Um, and the council is not here to discuss among themselves. That will happen at the council meeting when the council reviews the master plan and gives it their thumbs up or thumbs down. Uh, but the purpose of doing this is so that we can hopefully integrate or respond to those comments in the next draft. That the commission will look at and hopefully avoid a ping pong of the master plan back and forth between commission and council. Which will dread this out for longer than we hope. So with that, welcome.
Thanks. I'm terrible ping pong, so I'm so well. Uh, I'm appreciative of all the work you guys are doing. Thank you very much. Thank you for including us today. Um, a couple of quick comments that I want to make. Uh, first, obviously, I'm very focused on infrastructure. Um, regarding your priorities on this, frankly, I think it's a good list. Uh, I don't really see any concerns with it. Other than I might point out that, uh, the timeline on the lead line replacement, I'd sooner move that to shorter. Uh, and then otherwise, in, in terms of priorities across the board, I think you've done a pretty good job with it. Um, in fact, take a look at the timeline. Most of the things that you've listed on the sustainability section are already in the works, um, from the city and infrastructure. So good on that. Um, I do want to concur with some of what Commissioner Tack mentioned. I think we need to be really cognizant of unintended consequences, uh, with these. So I think, uh, again, appreciate the fact that we want to kind of elaborate. We just need to watch out that once a master plan isn't ready, then there may be some, some issues with zoning rules as people read what's codified. Um, one point I would like to make and watch this process, processes beginning. Um, I'm a little bit, uh, bothered by senior disconnect between MKSK and public comment. I think this commission's done excellent job of engaging community, of listening to community, putting together priorities. I'm a little bit taken aback though. It seems that, you know, when this sort of goes back to MKSK. They, they have priorities that seem to be a little bit disconnected from what we're hearing from the community. I mean, I think the point of, uh, public engagement is to make sure that public engagement and people who are living in the community are most directly affected by all this have a larger, you know, seat at the table, more input on all that. So I think that's just something to be aware of, especially that's going back to MKSK on this. Um, otherwise, the discussion tonight's been great, although I will, uh, voice my own aversion to something that was mentioned. I have a little bit of an issue with, um, suggesting that we codify, uh, kind of micromanagement of development of business district. Um, you know, having lived here now for a while, I'm really impressed with, you know, how things have been developing organically. Uh, again, personally, I always have a little bit of an issue and codifying, trying to direct the normal organic development, uh, of, of this business district that we have. Again, there, you know, maybe things that we have to address down the road, but again, restricting ourselves and maybe some unintended consequences to that. Um, otherwise, again, thank you guys very much. We can forward to, uh, you know, seeing how this all develops.
Great.
I certainly have nothing to add beyond the great work that you guys have done. So.
Council member, rather.
Thanks, Chair Lindsay. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the administration for, uh, recommending and committing to this process. Uh, it's a pretty important endeavor. Um, an updated municipal master plan is, is pretty vital. It's not only a requirement by the state of Michigan, but it's a good practice for our private community to continue to grow and to see our vision for the future. Um, I will ask, how can council support you all in pushing these priorities to fruition? Uh, I know we have Mayor Hodges and Manager Seisler here to engage all of us at council to typically, where our doors are always open for you guys if you have any questions. And I really appreciate all the time you put into it. Um, previously, we were talking about volunteers from the resident side and I'm not sure where that opportunity went. Was there any volunteers ever engaged on the resident side? And you don't have to answer that if you can.
Engaged in the planning process with MKSK?
Yeah. When we were talking about having a resident advisory board or resident commission.
I do not believe that that, other than volunteers at the workshop.
Yeah, I remember those, but we may have so many examples like you guys. Okay. I didn't know if that, if that was an issue that something went wrong there. Um, thank you all for putting in so much effort, uh, to drive this process as well. I can speak for many, many residents that were thankful for this refreshed master plan. And also planning commission and your public engagement and dedication to this process. Everything today discussed was, was very much appreciated by me and you all and my support and agreement. So there's just a few items I want to mention, which I think need a little more clarification. Um, there's not a lot of mention of senior housing opportunities. And if you could talk me about that, I think it's on page, well, I don't know which draft I was, page 105, and in neighborhoods. So if, if we can, and I can email you all these as well, Nick, uh, so you don't need to take notes. Um, the other thing, there's no discussion of, I'm, I'm the cultural development of discussion of alternative labor. Um, no connection with our Detroit area that's there. And I know some of you mentioned that, so that's really good to keep in mind. Um, and you know, I'm a school safety person. I didn't see a lot about our school safety process improvements, especially around schools. That's a big question right now with Board of Education or the GP PSS and how they're talking about making changes to peers without engaging you or the mayor. I think that needs to be in our master plan of how we see those processes going. Um, the roundabout issue as well, uh, solutions for the recommendations there, uh, that wasn't clear to see how important that was in there. Um, I know there's a recommendation to relooking that our installation as well. So I'd like something to, to be done with, uh, the roundabout there for a future, future improvement on that. Um, and I heard you mention the schools. That's all I have. I can email you some of these. And Nick, I apologize. I had an email loaded up to you and I never sent it. And I didn't mention it to you for two months. So I'll send this to you. I know they've not changed this, but just think. And once again, I want to thank you all for your time and dedication. So it's awesome to see all, all the work you guys have done. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember. Yes, if we have another public comment?
Yes, one other comment. That's, thank you all for your service. I mentioned this at the city council meeting and it's very evident that all you folks have done work on site here. It won't just, nobody just shows up at a meeting and starts being able to discuss all the things you're doing. For, I know, uh, Commissioner Evans and I, for example, are charter members, director generals, public safety. So there's an advisory board. Yeah, with that, he's active here. I know Mayor Hodges, just meeting her a few times at different events with the public safety head. I got the chance to talk to her and know how she feels about the city. Uh, Nick, I know Nick for a number of years, used to have, they said, that's pre pandemic at restaurants. Uh, you were well trained by, by a previous city manager, because if you sat there and be able to answer all the questions. You know, with honor, the elementary. And so it's, I'm sorry, I don't know, you council people, we only want some. You know, with their council, you know, Wayland, uh, the gym. Mayor Hodges from his other events, but the different things that Nick spoke at, what they were called, what they were, different restaurants. And there'd be a council member, or there for administration, maybe somebody there for the, you know, public safety department. So I served on vacation for 33 years and then on the council people that were there also, everybody puts in time. And so you are appreciated at the community. I, I could tell just by your habits, uh, you just, again, nobody just shows up. You're, you're all here because you want to be and you're, you're doing it well and you're, you are appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments. Our city is definitely some of all of its parts. And we have wonderful people that live here and work here and run their businesses from here, go to school here. And that's what makes Rose Point Park so special. And it's, I think, our, our vision as a planning commission is to lay that out and make sure that we continue to, to grow in that, in that same vein. So thank you. Appreciate it. I can vouch for council member, right? Pretty good guy too. Uh, that being said, um.
Chairperson Lindsay?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Porton Caulfield, pretty good to see you.
Okay.
Did you have some thoughts? Is it okay?
Yes, please.
Uh, and, and there's nothing that has already been said tonight, but, um, he did express some concerns on surveying how it was conducted. We've heard that previously. Um, also, uh, he really would like to see infrastructure emphasized too. That needs to be the top priority. Um, really would like to see the border issues mentioned as well that need to be collaborating. He specified some of the, uh, the crossroads, Jefferson Alter, Mackenalter, Mackenkendu. Uh, and other gateway issues that we might want to talk about to make sure that we're welcoming inclusive. Uh, wanting to focus on city owned properties, much like we've already noted. Uh, he also pointed out that city hall, uh, and the future DPW building were not mentioned adequately or, uh, as hubs. And the Dewey Marks open space and other pocket parks that need to be, uh, more readily identified. It's, uh, those spaces are not, uh, available for development. He did too, uh, make the point that we've heard from others that our 2010 census information should be utilized and incorporated. So, um, those were the points he had extended by email. He expressed his disappointment with not being able to be here, but, um. At least now his thoughts are part of the record. I don't know, City Manager Seisler, I think he should have stamped it.
Right.
He may have recalled more than he had to say, but that was my recollection.
Yeah. And a lot to the points too. I know, uh, infrastructure certainly a priority. And I know councilor Bier expressed that as well in his comments that, you know, but. And, and a lot of the discussion we had tonight, I think, uh, will, will, Mayor, Mayor Porton Caulfield.
I think those points are worth making approval once it gets to a council table too.
Right.
So, and I do, let me ask the, the question to that point, because I felt like we did have all, you know, the majority of our high priority action items relate to infrastructure. So does council want to see that emphasized more in the narrative in the beginning versus the points? Is that where we should be elaborating just from what, what you, you've seen?
Yeah, I think just some bold statements that really make it very clear. So yes, in the narrative and then, you know, uh, City Manager Seisler, you pointed out, you know, pages 111. I, to be honest, I think you have a really good grasp of what we all want and what we need. And when you get a chance to get your hands in this and mold it in a way, it'll probably come out of that process with the proper emphasis. You've been at enough of the tables to know what, what words need to be there in order to facilitate next steps. So I'm confident that, you know, make sure it gets to that point. Um, but yes, those would be the areas, it's all in the narrative and, uh, on those key pages. So yes, it's in there. We recognize that. It's not like it's not in there. I think it just needs to really hit the promise that it more. It's particularly in light of all the federal dollars that are out there. This is a moment, it's a once in a generation, if that, yeah, every, multiple generations moment, um, that we really don't want to.
Yeah. And to Mayor Hodges' point, I think too, uh, I think it's, I think it's page 96 or 68 or something. But there, it talks about the narrative in there, which, uh, you know, we're kind of at the action plan right now, you know, of all of our discussion points. I think something that what I'm seeing too, especially all these dollars coming in, if we can put a little more, you know, into that narrative, uh, on that infrastructure page. I think again, it's going to be, a lot of the highlights are already in the action plan, but if you just add a little more into that, I, I think that's something that is certainly. You know, what I'm hearing from, uh, you know, city council and I know our priority as a community is certainly infrastructure. So what I can do on top of, you know, after we have all these comments put together, what I'll do is I will look to, you know, specifically within that narrative, you know, attach that to the commission. So they can see exactly, you know, what we're putting into there, adding just more meat into that.
Does that sound agreeable to all the commissioners that we can emphasize that in the narrative? Commissioner Chesterton?
I.
I could have a pick.
No, oh, no. I, 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 and to Commissioner Tack's point, again, not everything can be a high priority, but I really struggle with how, uh, some would say outdated or zoning ordinances. Especially as new development comes online. And I think that anything relates to impacting new development and infrastructure would hopefully share some of the media. I know we have limited capacity, but I would really like to see, I think that the reality is I see zoning ordinances take upwards of two years to get adopted. And, and, and I don't know that we've even identified a body, uh, to, to get that happening, to put that in process, I think is really important. Because the, the myriad of inappropriate development that could happen between now and when that's approved, um, is, is a little concerning. I do not think that that is above, again, life safety, welfare, space, that's 100%. But somehow that can share the priority that will be really important. Once City Manager Seisler and I are in the process of reviewing the one page documents we've asked each of the committees to submit, ordinance review being one of them, that will help. So, so it's, we need to do that review coming up later this week. I think we can make sure that that notion and that sentiment is captured. So that sense of urgency is there.
Right. We have a running tally right now.
And we're making progress.
Yes.
Nipping away at that.
Yeah.
So again, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that that be the world, but if there's any way, I think there's a matter of understanding which trajectory. It looks like what we're actually asking, when we get all these things high priority, I think anything that impacts new development should be pushed up wherever appropriate. Simply because of the timeframe that it takes to get that adopted, ready and adopted, approved.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate that.
It's something to help to the capacity of that too. So I have hired an assistant city manager. He is coming online on Monday. So trial by fire, a council meeting. Um, you know, one of his core focuses, Commissioner Chesterton's really going to be on planning and zoning, uh, something really going to have a core focus on with the building department. So, uh, you know, again, spreading all of our departments and all of our priorities need certainly, you know, infrastructure's there. Your comments as well are there and something I'll be able to, all right, it's work. So.
Thank you. Are there any other comments either from the commission or from the public? I think with that, we have an understanding that City Manager Seisler is going to take our comments tonight. He's going to refine them, edit them, work with MKSK, and then we will receive a document to review prior to our public hearing. So what we will need to do, I would think at this point, we should tentatively say that our June meeting will be our public hearing. And that we can have the revised version of that document. Ideally, within the next four weeks. So that commission has a two week review period prior to that.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay. We'll target you first.
Target that date and kind of keep ourselves on track and on schedule. So that way, after the public hearing where MKSK will be present, um, at that point, we will vote on the document, vote on passing that document along to city council. So hopefully there is enough time to edit, get those revisions back and then let everyone have, have time to, to digest the document before we move on to the public hearing.
Yes. Could I just ask the council review, um, enabling legislation to ensure that the draft is not considered substantially different from the original? Period.
Or to city attorney?
Yeah. And I'll just note that without seeing what the revised draft looks like, I'm going to only be able to give you some general guidelines of what might be substantially different.
Understood. I assume it's on everyone's radar, but if we're having a public hearing, if you're, they would be making that here, it would be based on the original draft.
Thank you. To keep us on track. Uh, and with that, uh, if there is a motion to adjourn. I will give that to Commissioner, the tacky, in a second. Commissioner Chesterton, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is so adjourned. Thank you, everyone.